On January 28th, 2020. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. And I'm going to ask the city clerk to call role to get us started, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present. And Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in the invocation, please? Please stand with us.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are just overwhelmed with your goodness to us. And we pray a blessing on this meeting that all we say and do will bring you glory and will be for the best of our citizens. And we just ask that you would give us wisdom, respect, and kindness for one another. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you. And please stay standing and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. You may be seated. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one deletion to be item 3A. Item 3A, under ordinance adoptions, City Paducah Special Event Cost Recovery Program. We had a responsibility or obligation, if you will, to our event providers to provide them with a year's advance notice, basically what those costs would be to them as far as what the city's costs were. That way they can have a concept, if you will, what the potential cost would be to them when they prepare for their event. We did not do that. So we're going to go back to the same process again, reach out to the departmental teams, if you will, to get that cost for those event providers, give them notification, and then try this again 2021.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then we have some employee introductions tonight. I'm going to turn that over to you as well, Jim, if you don't mind.
No problem at all. We have with us police officers, four new ones. Chief Larry, if you would, please.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, it's my honor to introduce four new police officers to you. They've gone through a pretty rigorous screening process to get to this point. We're excited to bring them on board starting on Thursday, and then they will go to the police academy starting March 1st. So we were able to get them in an academy within a very short period of time. We thought it was going to be a little bit later than that, but they were able to squeeze us in due to the needs that we have. I'd like to introduce them to you. First one is Noah Willett. He's 26 years old, originally graduated Marshall County. He served in the United States Marine Corps from 2014 to 2019.
Wow.
Next one is Jamie Eitenire. He's 26 years old, was originally from Olympia, Washington, served in the United States Army from 2013 until about three days ago.
Wow.
Michael Vowle, he's 30 years old, is from Fulton County High School, served in the National Guard from 2007 to 2009. And then we have James Whitworth, he's 26 years old, graduated Livingston County High School, served in the National Guard from 2012 till current. Just on a side note, his sister is married to Jamie Eitenire.
Nice. Welcome to the team. You guys want to come introduce yourselves?
Welcome, sir.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation from our city clerk on a software program that she's been working on with our team called Open Counter. And I just want to say, we had our strategic plan retreat on Saturday, and we talked a lot about the accomplishments that we've seen over the last year around making sure we're more business friendly, that we are setting a stage for people who want to come in and do projects, and we're making it as easy as possible as they can. So thank you for all the work you've done on this. I'm excited to see how this is going to work.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. There are a lot of pieces that go into getting a business started, and we wanted something that could take all of those different pieces and put them in one place in an easy way that you can just kind of click through. Another challenge that we have is that certain really large projects, the requirements for that are going to be a lot different than something that's smaller. So how do we make something that fits any different size of project that's going on in Paducah? So we started back in September, working with Open Counter to create two new portals. We have a zoning portal and a business portal that we are launching, and those will be ready for the public to view next Monday, the 3rd. But you all are getting kind of a sneak peek at that tonight. We wanted something that would bring in not only our permitting, like building and electrical permitting, but also alcohol licensing, kickstart meetings, business licensing, and just kind of everything that goes on with the city's side of it, so that people can do, can scope their projects online. So this will be able to be viewed, it'll be linked to our website next Monday, and they can also go to scopemyproject.padukaky.gov, and it's just an easy tool for them to use. So I'm going to kind of jump in and show you just a little bit about how it's going to work. So this is going to be the front page that people see when they come to scopemyproject.padukaky.gov. And there's two different portals here. The zoning portal mainly is going to be for if you're just looking for zoning for an upcoming project, and that's all that you really want to know right now, just zoning, you can get that here. But if you're wanting a more holistic, you know you're going to do some construction work, you know you're going to need, you're going to have a new business that you're starting, I recommend going to the business portal because it kind of encapsulates both the zoning and the business. So we're just going to start here for tonight. The first page that you're going to come to is just kind of an overview of what you're going to see about the project type, the location, permits, fees, and a summary of your project, so you can just continue to click through. And this is where you can type in whatever kind of business you're wanting to start. So anything from a yoga studio to something pretty unique, so what about axe throwing? Indoor sports and recreation would come up, something like that. So you can, you can see that it's pretty much, there's just about any kind of use that you would want to have in the city, you can find through here. If you don't see it pop up here, you can always browse a list of our codes right here, and it'll show you their civic uses, commercial uses, and office uses. But I think that what we're going to do tonight, just for, because these restaurants, we can get a little bit of everything in there, so for the sake of time, we're going to use a restaurant as an example for tonight. So you see comes down here, Restaurant and Bars pops up, so we can just click Next. And then you get a map of the city. The green areas are zoned where you can place that business, depending on what you've selected as your business type. The gray areas are going to be prohibited, and the yellow areas are going to be conditional. And as you see, as we kind of go through here, there are certain questions that you'll be asked, and these might change based on your answers to those questions. So I'm going to zoom in a little bit. I'm going to just pick a location on the map. You can either type it in here, or you can click on a parcel in the city, and then it's going to ask me if this business type already exists at this location. I'm going to, I'm going to say yes, and you can see some things become conditional then if it already exists, or no, and some things still stay prohibited. So I'm going to leave it at no. And then we're going to move into the permit side. So we start with a question about what is the scope of work for this project? So it could be anything from a new construction to if you're wanting to do a pool or some kind of accessory structure, or if you're wanting to add on to a building or just do some internal renovations. This is kind of how we make it so that anything from a huge new 20,000 square foot new build, all the way down to someone just wants to add on something to a smaller or do an internal renovation. So for this, I'm going to select, this is a new construction project, and you can see on this side, things will start to populate that have additional information below them. Select the types of work that apply to this project. We'll say this has, we're going to do electrical, we're going to do fire alarm, mechanical, let's do gas, and let's do plumbing. And you see more start to pop up over here. Does your project involve the production, distribution, or sale of alcohol? So we're doing a restaurant, let's say, yes, we want to provide alcohol, so you can have an alcoholic beverage permit that comes up over here. And then are you starting a new business? So yes, let's say this is a brand-new restaurant that we're bringing into the city, and so business license will come up, because you'll be needing that as well. I'm going to say that we will be installing new signs for the business. And you can see a sign permit comes up down here. This has to do with if you are removing or planting trees in the right-of-way. So let's say we don't need that, but if we did, we could select that, and it would tell you more information about what you need to do in order to do that. And then are you interested in scheduling a meeting with city staff to review your proposed project before submitting plans? This is a great way for us to involve our kickstart meetings in this, so that if they say yes, they are interested, they're going to get more information about a kickstart meeting, that they could come in and sit down with staff. And then are you going to change any streets, curbs, or right-of-way, including driveways or entrances? So if they select yes, that would bring in more information about a right-of-way permit that they would need. So this is a little bit of everything. And then we start to narrow it down on the next fees page. So they can say, we're, what kind of activities will occur at your establishment for the sale of alcohol? So they're going to be selling alcohol for people to consume on the premises. And then you can select what types of alcohol you're going to be selling. So this makes a difference in how much it will cost as far as permit fees. So let's say malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits. You can select if you want to add a generator to your project here, which would reflect in the fees on this side. This isn't going to require a re-roof, but there might be some projects that would. Will you demolish an existing structure? So over here, if you drop down the building permit, if we said, yes, there's something there already that we're going to have to get rid of, it would change this over here, and there would be a demolition permit needed. But if we don't, that gets taken away. Does your project involve the construction and/or operation of a distillery? We're going to say no there. And will it be at a qualified historic site? One of the neat things about it is if someone doesn't know exactly what that means, they can look at the definition that'll be right beside it in order to understand exactly what a qualified historic site is, and that affects your alcohol licensing. We're going to say no there. This is also related to alcohol licensing. So if we're going to have 50% or more of our food sales, 50% or more of our gross revenues from food sales, that affects how much permit fees will be for your licensing. And this has to do, what type of category does your new business fall into? So this is going to affect our business license. So if they are not a circus, pawn shop, or contractor, if they're anything else, they can select all other businesses, and they can see that their business license is going to be $35. And then we get into just a few questions. Does it pay, is, if the, is the paved and under-roof area of your project equal to or greater than 10,000 square feet in size? So that has to do with stormwater. So we'll say no. And again, does your project disturb land greater than or equal to 1 acre? So if we were to say yes here, we get additional information over here on the site plan. So you're going to need a site plan with stormwater, which is $100, versus without would be 50. Then we get to put in some estimated costs. So let's say this construction is going to cost $200,000. That affects our building permit. Select the type of work, electrical work that applies. This is going to be a new installation. We're going to say that the new installation of electrical work will cost $20,000. We won't have any additional bars located at the premises. We won't provide catering services. We don't want to sell alcohol on Sundays. Our sign will require electricity. The value of the signage installation, and the value of our HVAC, approximate. So you can see it totals up these costs over here. You can go through each one of these and find out more information. One of the great things is the city doesn't actually do any of the permitting and inspections for plumbing, but we've got this in here because it's a frequently asked question, is how do I get a plumbing permit? And this can take you directly to the website where you would need to go to get that information. So once we've kind of gone through this, and you can go back and change whatever you want to, to kind of see how it works with the system, but let's say that we're done, you get a summary of all of the permits that you will need. You get information about the zoning area, the land use code, the flood plain, and a summary of everything that you've put into the system. So you can either download this here, or you can contact city staff for more information. And up until this point, you'll notice that you haven't had to log into anything or put any information in, so that you, you can go in and you can play with this, which is a great feature, without having to do anything. And you can say, you know what, scrap that, start over, I want to try something different. Maybe I wanted to change my business in this way. But if you are ready to kind of start your permit application process, you just create an account with an email address right here, and you choose a password. I'm going to sign in as myself, because I've already got one. I'm going to call this. And on the inside of it here, it shows you exactly what permits that you're going to need, and you can learn more information about each one, about how to submit, how to download those. So you can obtain, you get a description, you can link to our website where it gives more information. Open up the building permit here. You can download the actual application form that you will need. And you can learn more about each one of the things that you're going to need as far as permitting for the city. And you can save as many projects in here as you want to. So if you would go to my projects, you can see that I've been in here testing the site, and I've got a lot of different projects through here. And so you can do, yeah, you can do as many different projects as you want to in here and save them, so you can go back and compare, what is my cost going to be, what is the zoning going to be on these different types of projects or locations in the city. So it's very, very customized and to Paducah, and I believe it's going to be a great tool for people to use as they want to scope a new project here in Paducah. We are going to have two different sessions, February 13th in the morning from 9:00 to 11:00, and February 14th in the afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00, where people can come in. We're going to do an open house, so that they can kind of walk through this with us if they want to. And we're also going to have Pam Spencer is putting together a how-to video that'll also be on the website that kind of shows how to go about this. We think that it's pretty easy to use, pretty user-friendly, as far as I just want to go on and try some new things. And then when they're ready to move forward with their project, they can go ahead and submit those applications, or they can schedule a kickstart meeting, and we can talk about it with our team.
That's incredible.
You can do it at 2:00 in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
On a Wednesday.
Yes, exactly.
It doesn't matter. And all your data is, it's live. I mean, it's all to speed, so it's amazing.
This is amazing. So once you fill out your application, and you send them in, can you do all this without ever even coming to City Hall?
You will be able to. That is the next step in the process. Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was going to ask, too. So the, we have to get Intergov connected to this in order to be able to get a whole process through?
Right. Got it.
This is where you dream? In fact, we talked about calling it like Dream Zone or something, where people can come in and kind of, okay, I want to do a business, and I'm not sure what it is, and you can conceptualize and dream and play with it, and when you're ready, you go to Intergov, and you can do your permits from your house, too.
But still, it's nice to see what all is required at one spot. Like even if you have to download it and do it differently right now, it's still really nice to see.
All of these are located in different departments, it's different information, it's, it's hard to kind of gather all of this and to customize it when you're just trying to figure it out at 2:00 a.m. So I think that this is a really great tool for people to be able to use. Yes.
You know, as someone who did a project and started businesses along with that project, I can see how this would have been so helpful, because you were always having to come into inspections and ask a question, okay, what is the comprehensive list I need? And then wait a second, nope, I missed something. You know, it was like always going back and forth, so that is so great.
What we always said with that customer experience is that you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
You don't know the questions to ask.
Yeah.
Yes.
This, it tells you, it asks you the questions, and it shows you what you're going to do.
Right.
This is brilliant.
It is. Absolutely.
You write this up yourself?
I did not create this by myself, no. It was a group effort. We had not only the help from Open Counter, which they were great to work with, but also our team has done a lot of work on this. A lot of work.
It really does. It's very obvious.
A lot of collaboration has gone into it, a lot of learning about other departments and how they function, and it's been really, really, it's, I think it's been helpful. And yeah, a lot of work's gone into it.
Mm-hmm. Great. That's great. Well, this is the perfect tee-up for the guy who's coming up next, because I bet he's going to be the guy who sends this website to every client that comes along. You should write one of those, those dates down to come watch and get a little bit more information. But thank you, Bruce Wilcox, for being here from Greater Paducah Economic Development to give us an update.
Fantastic. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Harless and Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. We appreciate and thank you for the opportunity for Greater Paducah Economic Development to be able to be on your agenda this evening and present some of our activities and results for the fourth quarter of 2019. We greatly appreciate your support and your partnership. Without your support and your partnership with G-PED, we would not be able to do what we do. So for that, we certainly do thank you. The fourth quarter of 2019 was very active. In conjunction with the Ford Paducah Plan, Heather Pierce, our project manager and I, we completed 85 activities specific to the Ford Paducah Plan, in addition to other meetings and events. During the fourth quarter, we attended a statewide symposium sponsored by the Kentucky Association for Economic Development, made a visit to Frankfurt, we attended regional economic development meetings, Paducah-McRacken County Riverport meetings, toured the Big Rivers Electric Power Facility in Seabree, Kentucky. I attended the community trip to Oak Ridge, Tennessee, where we saw the reindustrialization of the Gaseous Diffusion Plant and the progress that Oak Ridge has made there. And then I also attended a site selector forum in Chicago, Illinois, just to name a few. I've also made several community presentations to share with what's going on with G-PED and what the landscape of economic development looks like. And while not, certainly not in the fourth quarter, we had our first Governmental Affairs Committee meeting the first week of January. Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Wilson was there, and we've gotten some really nice feedback from that, and we're looking forward to our next meeting, the first or second week of February. So it's been a good time so far. In the month of November, we were awarded the Great River Cup by Site Selection Magazine. Site Selection Magazine is an international publication that's distributed to over 48,000 people internationally. We received the award as being the top metro area along the Ohio River, based upon an index of corporate facility investment and job creation per capita, based upon site selections criteria in their database. And as many of you know, we were recently featured in an article by The Lane Report, where they featured our momentum from 2019 and how we're poised for growth in 2020. So we've had some really nice positive press within the last month or two. Since our last Investor Council meeting mid-year, we've had a total of eight new projects, eight new projects. We currently have 12 in the pipeline, 12 projects are active. The current projects range from startup with 10 to 15 new employees, all the way up to 600 employees with a projected capital investment of $1 billion. The age of these projects range from one starting in the year 2012, 2013, all the way up to we got a new project yesterday that we're really excited about it. And I'll go over those projects with you when we go to closed session or executive session later, just due to the sensitivity, nature of the information, and the confidentiality. But needless to say, we're very excited about the opportunities that we have before us. Since the last presentation, Dippin' Dots announced a $3.3 million expansion and 30 new jobs. This is a 6,000-square-foot addition to a cryogenically-produced meat-based plant product. The accident they had last month kind of slowed things down a little bit, but we've met with them, and they're back on schedule, and they look to be having that project completed this year. And the good news is, things are going well. They actually have an opportunity to grow that cryogenic process even more, maybe even with some pharmaceutical companies and things. So we're looking for upwards of maybe even another 30 jobs for a total of 60 from that. So that's some good news there. We're working with another local manufacturer on the expansion of a paint facility with adding two new lines and a new building. Each one of these paint lines cost $1 million, and they're going to construct a new building. So minimal $2 million investment, upwards of probably three. And the good news is, that's going to be 100 new jobs. You can look for that to be completed in 2021. We're also working with another local company on an expansion project relocating some jobs from another state. This is approximately a $1 million project that's going to add another 13 or 14 jobs. And as many of you are aware, Kentucky Care recently announced a $3 million facility out on the south side that's going to add six new jobs that are in the medical and professional field. And we've worked with a private investor regarding a $3 million new capital investment in some apartments and condominiums downtown that we expect to be coming in the very near future. There have been several other community wins as well, and while we were not directly involved with the award of the $10.4 million bill grant that the city actively pursued in the chamber, we applaud the city and the chamber for their efforts in getting that secured, because that, that just adds to the significance of what we have to offer in our community. And it's very positive, it's very encouraging to talk about the good news and the things that we have going on in our community when we're talking with prospective companies. And then you throw the expansion of Barclay Regional Airport on that, another $30, $35 million going to our community. It's a phenomenal story and exciting to tell. We are aware of upwards of $100 million of new capital investment that's potentially going into our community within the next 24 to 36 months. So it's a great time to be living in Paducah. We successfully brokered the extension of Teletext lease in the Commerce Park between the City of Paducah and McRacken County. This lease is in the finalization stages, and it will ensure Teletext's presence for another five years. And if you will recall, Teletext announced 100 new additional jobs back in the month of October. They vacated the facility at 401 Kentucky Avenue. That, that building is vacant. We've listed that building for sale and/or leased, and we're currently working with a prospective tenant on trying to backfill that space and add some new jobs there as well. We also successfully negotiated the purchase of the Medrow property. This was a seven-acre piece of property out at the Triple Rail Site. This property was secured with PACRO proceeds, and it went through McRacken County Fiscal Court. And as you might be aware, McRacken County is now the proud owner of seven acres out at the Triple Rail Site. But that, that was a nice asset to purchase to true up that piece of land. We also refinanced $1.6 million in debt with KEDFA, that's Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority, for another five years, and we paid off a small PACRO note. While attending the December KEDFA meeting, I also had the privilege of meeting the new Interim Secretary for Economic Development, Larry Hayes. And then over the past couple of weeks, I've been fortunate to have correspondence with the new Commissioner of Business Development, Jeff Taylor, and actually have had the opportunity to speak with him a time or two. So we're really excited, and we look forward to working with our new partners in Frankfurt as well going forward. And we're working with two prospective parties interested in the Genova facility. Most all of you have heard, it's been in the media, that we were working with one, but we've had another interest last week, and some of us have already met. We've done site visits here, we've taken them out to view the facility. And both of these parties are interested in re-establishing plastics production there, and also looking at expanded and also looking at expanded distribution from Paducah. So we'll continue to work that as well. While I was in Chicago attending the Site Selector Forum, I met with some site selectors and I saw some presentations from Site Selection Magazine where they identified the top five industries for growth for 2020. Those five industries were distribution and logistics, advanced manufacturing, healthcare and biomedical, food processing, and data centers. And I won't go over all of our assets that we have available to market tonight, but I think most of you here this evening are familiar with the assets we have. And you can see that our assets match up pretty well with these opportunities for growth that we have before us. Another one of the top takeaways I took from the Site Selector Forum in Chicago was that I heard about the importance of what it was to have one voice within our community and being unified in our approach. There are over thirty thousand municipal, sub-municipal government organizations and there are over fifteen thousand economic development organizations in the United States. We're all going after the same opportunities, the same projects. It's not necessarily site selection, it's site elimination. So that's why it's critically important that we as a city, we as the county, we as an ED organization, we as a media, that we have one voice and we share the good news and we lift each other up and we do our part in promoting the good news that we have in our community. As we move forward into 2020, you can expect to see us updating our maps, marketing materials, signage, website, better positioning our assets for market. My intention is to participate in the Kentucky United Site Selector Tour that begins in March and that runs through December, where the goal is to get in front of site selectors and start developing relationships with them. Those meetings are in New York, Chicago, Dallas, Greenville, Atlanta, uh, possibly looking at the Kentucky United, um, meeting, uh, where it's an international meeting in June with the the folks in Frankfurt as well. You'll also see some additional engagement with us, uh, with the city in our business retention and expansion program. Heather Pierce is already working with Catherine Byers on making joint, uh, BR and E calls. And I think you'll see us more engaged with the chamber this year as the chamber has some new initiatives on workforce development. So we really look forward to working closer with the chamber and and the city in that regard. So we're really excited about what 2020 has before us. And this wasn't in my notes, but I'll give a shout out to Mr. Arndt and Mr. Cherry. Uh, one of our objectives with G-PED is to remove barriers and obstacles on businesses growing and relocating to Paducah. And we had the opportunity last Wednesday to meet with a prospective company that was looking at some expansion here. And we had some very nice results from that. They were very complimentary of you and the inspection services here at Paducah. So, uh, that's great work and and great partnership there. So out of respect for everyone's time, I'll go ahead and cut it short, just hoping that you know that there's a lot of other good works and a lot of good things that have gone on and I hope to share more of those with you in closed session. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions or thoughts or comments you have at this point.
Questions, comments?
Appreciate the hard work you're doing. Sounds good.
Been busy.
I really appreciate this kind of update. It really does put in perspective all the work that you do between when we see you last and I get to see you on a regular basis. But, um, thank you so much for making it a point to come here. I know you went to the fiscal court last night.
It was a doozy.
Yeah. Well, we really appreciate. I wanted to tell you, uh, we talked about this before and, um, uh, kind of a divide-and-conquer approach. I'm headed to the International Economic Development Council Conference, um, in a couple of weeks. And by surprise, about two weeks ago, they reached out to me and asked me to sit on a panel. And the panel is specifically about how do local economic development organizations engage local officials? So I don't know if they know where we've been and where we are now or if they were just whoever is elected, let's get them in here. But I'm excited to share the progress with GPD and the city and how we have managed to kind of navigate that new relationship. So thank you for being on the other side of that. And I'm looking forward to the next year because I think it's going to be a good one for us.
We're excited.
Yep. Thank you guys for sticking around. All right. Thank you. Okay, next up, we're going to invite, uh, Chris Kemp and team up from Los Design to give us an update on the Recreation and Aquatics Facility.
It's a pleasure to be here, Mayor, Commissioners, staff, uh, to talk about our progress on the Paducah Wellness and Aquatics Center. We'll jump. Right. Okay. Wrong one. Let's try this one.
Go right.
There we go. All right. So last August, we kicked off, uh, the process with the, uh, our Steering Committee and staff. Had, uh, Team Member SFA who did our pro forma there as well. And just really to start the discussion on where you wanted to go with this facility. You know, we, what what were the facilities you wanted to have? You identified several sites that you would like for us to look at. Uh, we we looked at, uh, you know, total costs. What what kind of range did you want to fall into? And various things. And then, you know, as part of our financial pro forma, you know, the evaluation, you know, we talked about what is success here in Paducah? Uh, you know, what are the participation rates that, you know, do you want to hit? What level of competition do you want, uh, for the swim facilities? You know, what other special events might you hold? And all of those things went into the, uh, development of a pro forma. And I know the text is small, but on the left-hand side of this slide are all of the space requirements. So we defined from office space to multipurpose meeting room to wellness space, gymnasium, the size of pools, uh, that you would like to have in the nadorium. And we worked through all of that, uh, with our consultant. On the right-hand side is all of the related dollar figures. So we took the same spaces. Then we started, uh, putting, uh, construction costs to those. And I'll give you an example, the the difference between dry and wet. Well, obviously, the gymnasium on a per-square-foot cost is much lower than the nadorium because the nadorium, we have to have a lot more mechanical systems for air quality as well as the pumps and all. So we went through that process and came up, uh, roughly nineteen million for hard cost. There's another million that we projected for soft costs, the startup and training staff and things like that. So we left it, uh, step one was, you know, approximately, what is it going to cost to build a center? Uh, roughly, uh, initially, we were looking at around sixty thousand square feet and that was the starting point. As as the architecture firm, we had not put pencil on paper at this point. This was all, where are we going? How big is it going to be? What what's the cost? So as part of that pro forma, we also projected, uh, uh, operating costs and things like that. But I thought you might find this, uh, particular part of the pro forma very interesting. Uh, again, you, we're coming up behind your economic development people. Well, developing this center, uh, and starting out year one, we would, uh, we are projecting fifteen hundred new guests, hotel rooms, directly tied to this center. And by year five, that will grow to thirty-five hundred visitors coming to Paducah to use this facility. And what that equates to in terms of dollars by year five, direct spending, and that's, you know, when when you talk about spending, a lot of times I say, well, it turns over and it turns over and it turns over. Direct spending, one-time dollars resulting from, uh, the economic impact of the of the Wellness and Aquatics Center is roughly one million, one-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand dollars directly tied to the city developing this facility. And I love coming up behind the economic development, uh, staff because, you know, uh, we we had a meeting on Friday where, is that same thing? We came right up behind the economic development staff. And it was, he used a slide in his presentation about the investments this other community we're working with is is making. They're building a rec center. They built a new public works center. They bought new parkland. And how, when companies see a city investing in itself, it has value to 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 help you attract those new businesses. So from there, uh, once we knew how big approximately things, we started the theming process. And and again, working with the Steering Committee, presenting ideas for climbing features and water features and and walking tracks and things like that to try, again, to help our design team wrap their head around, you know, what this building could be. We evaluated multiple sites. And it was determined that Noble Park was the best site. It was centralized. There were, it had more walkability and by that I mean there were more residents who could walk it to that location. We looked at a downtown location, but it didn't have the same walkable characters and it was, the roadways weren't as good. So then we moved on, you know, to really starting with Sean, uh, uh, who's with me here tonight, started modeling the building a little bit. We then were able to start extrapolating what the site design might look like. And and then we really started digging into Paducah. Who is Paducah? What is Paducah? And, you know, some of the the words that we had heard in the in the meetings and then we we spent some time just walking around Paducah, looking at things to get ideas. And, you know, the central theme we kept coming back to was the river. It's like a ribbon that flows through your city and it creates, it creates eddies and pockets and and, you know, uh, it defines the shape of the city. And we thought, you know, this is, this is a really cool idea. And so we started sort of applying that river form to the site. And and, you know, said, well, what if a greenway flowed through here? What kind of spaces would it create? We have the levee on one side. We have Park Avenue. We have an existing drive. And, you know, uh, you know, uh, eddies are spaces for life and that's my company's, uh, tagline, spaces for life. And we thought, this, we're we're getting something here. And then we, you know, started saying, well, we got to have parking. You know, we got to have multipurpose field to support outdoor activities for the building. And so that evolved into this site plan. And this site plan is what we have funds to develop in this phase of the project. So you see, this is the existing entry drive into Noble Park. We have put the building up near Park Avenue because we want this to be an iconic feature when you come into Paducah. We also didn't want you to be looking at a three-hundred-car parking lot. We'd rather you see the building. So this building actually has two facades. It has one that faces the street and one that faces the park. And of course, we have a drop-off and then, uh, there's a lot of available green space uh, around the building. And so with our current funding level, uh, this is what you would get. But over time, as we look at future capital development projects, we've also recommended that we add a traffic light, create a new entry into the park, have a synthetic sports field that you can program year-round, have what we're calling the formal plaza in this location. And the and the formal plaza and the multipurpose field could be places where you start a five-K run or do a rally for breast cancer and things like that. So that the indoor spaces and the outdoor spaces flow together and it and it, um, and and of course, then we have a greenway connection that ties into your existing greenway system and loops through the park. So that that would be the long-term vision, but I'll back up again. You're getting most of that, uh, other than some of the 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 special additions that we we see happening as future capital development, uh, projects. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Sean Guth, who's our Director of Architecture. Let him talk about the building and then I'll close our presentation.
Thank you very much. I'll start off taking you through the building and kind of the the formal organization. One of the the key aspects that we start off with with design, taking the program that was developed through the feasibility study, was, uh, keeping security and safety at the forefront of our design. So as you move through the front entry vestibule, uh, you can see at the top of the screen in yellow, um, that that signifies where the main front door would be, where there would be a controlled access point where you can, um, immediately, uh, interact with a reception, uh, a hostess or host that will have direct visibility to the front doors and throughout the rest of the facility. Uh, they are located directly across from the vertical access of the facility, the grand stairway, the elevators, um, also directly across from your child watch area. Uh, we all know that, uh, children is is, um, something that we we hold sacred. So we really want to make sure that they are, um, taken care of. In the main open lobby, we have, uh, concession space, uh, some high activity zones. In in the pro forma, uh, going through the feasibility study, it was identified that a climbing feature would be great in this facility and something that is is wanted by the community. So we have that located right inside the the main lobby for high activity. We have divided the facility with, from the wet and the dry, as Chris mentioned earlier. Um, you, those two types of uses require different mechanical systems and different, uh, features to function well. Uh, the locker rooms are also designed, um, in that same format. As you enter into a locker room, you enter the dry space and slowly transition into the wet space within the locker rooms and then access directly into the nadorium. Um, in the brown on the front, uh, part, again, the the front of the building can also be considered the back of the building, depending on how you look at it. But adjacent to the main entry, the main front door, uh, will be a secondary entry into, uh, a tenant-leaseable space for the city that a potential partnership could go into. That is something that we'll be looking at as we move forward. But they will have their own entry. And, um, if it is some sort of a healthcare provider, um, many of those, um, types of leases in in this type of partnership like access to, uh, a nadorium for various types of therapy uses or activities. So they will have their own access into the nadorium as well. Uh, you'll have one full-size gym in the gymnasium that can be divided into two half-size courts. We will be looking to stripe that for multi-sports. And that's something that can adapt over the years as trends change, sports change. And it is also going to be a multi-use space for the community for larger events. Uh, moving up to the second level, um, again, you'll have a grand stairway or an elevator right up in the main lobby, very visible. So, um, everyone knows exactly how to get there. You would access this open mezzanine level. And one of the things that we were charged with at the forefront of this project was how can this facility, uh, stand alone? How can it be a separator from other similar facilities across, uh, the nation? And, uh, we have a very large running track circulating the full perimeter of the main portion of the building. This running track is extremely large. It is fantastic. Around the inner, uh, lane of the track, if you do six laps on that track, you have reached one mile. That's pretty significant. You know, for a high school track meet, four laps around a four-hundred-meter track is one mile. We're very close to that in this facility. This is, this is going to be your separator, something that is going to put this facility up against any other community wellness center across the nation. Also upstairs, you can see, uh, above the the space, the brown space I was referring to earlier on the front of the building, is another, uh, tenant, uh, shelf space that can, um, house another use, um, as the city sees fit and as it makes sense with the operations of this facility. We do have two fitness rooms, um, on this level for various types of activities, classes, boot camps, um, any sort of active space. And then if you notice in pink up on the front of the building, that is a multipurpose room. On the, I'm going to go back to the first floor. You can see there's two pink rooms on this level as well, one larger, um, that is going to be also a programmable, multipurpose community room. And then the smaller one is associated with the aquatics portion of the house for, um, a wet classroom where you can ho- host, um, instructional classes for aquatic nature, swim classes, teaching lessons, uh, lifeguard training, things that would require you to transition between the pool, go get a lesson and get back in. That room will be able to accommodate, uh, wet activities. Staying with the, uh, the second mezzanine level, um, you can see in the nadorium, the the darker gray flume slide will be a two-story level slide, a lot of fun for the kids. So something that's high active, high energy. And then, of course, we have been paying close attention to, uh, our egress points to safely evacuate people through the building as needed. So here is a an initial rendering, uh, view of the front entry of the building. We call this a white box. We call this a white box rendering. Uh, right now, we are at the level of, of starting to understand the form of this facility. And, uh, we will be moving into, um, looking at materiality and textures in the next subsequent phases. But you can see that nice roundabout drive for the main front entry drop off. You have a large entry canopy signifying the front door of the facility. And just to the left of that would be the secondary entry for a possible, uh, tenant to come into the facility. This is a view of, of that, uh, front facade facing interior to the park. Um, that first level would be the front leasable, um, tenant space. And right above that, again, is another potential tenant space. Um, you can then see the drive will, where that, uh, white pickup truck is heading towards the front roundabout drop off. Now, your other front facade of this building, fronting Park Avenue, is going to be, um, very visible to the public. So we're going to make sure to have a lot of energy and interaction with, um, the activities being visible from interior to the building, to all your patrons, um, and, uh, community members driving up and down Park Avenue, seeing all the fun that's being had inside this facility and wanting to go in and join. Um, along the second level, uh, of these windows will be that running track circumventing the whole entire building. This is a view of the, the corner adjacent to the main entry to the park. Well, the main entry closest to this facility of the park where aquatics would be. And then this is the other corner. So if you were heading eastbound on Park Avenue, uh, this would be the corner that you would approach the building, which will be housing the gymnasium. And again, we'll be, um, providing lots of, uh, finestrations so that you can see what's going on inside the facility, um, basketball games, any sort of events, people utilizing that running track running all around the building. Um, this is back to that front drop off view. You'll notice that we are planning for, um, a nice open central lawn that is a great opportunity for the city to work with its arts group that could possibly provide, uh, a sculpture, or you can do some sort of memorial or monumental sign in that area. But you have a lot of flexibility with the space and we were, um, definitely designing with future change and growth in mind. Flexibility is going to be key with a long-term facility like this. Here's a view as we move into the building, into that main lobby, as you come in the front doors. Um, again, you'll see exactly that vertical access, uh, how to get up to that mezzanine level. Um, we'll have some sort of climbing features in the lobby. These are just representations of what possibly could be there at this time. Um, standing at this point, looking to the left of the stairs, the, that is the access into the nadatorium and the access into the locker rooms. And to the left of that, the child watch area. So all of those are directly visible from your main control point. So your operator will always have direct monitor line of sight onto those important areas. You can see to the right of the climbing features, you'll be able to see all the way through this building, directly out to Park Avenue. And right above that, the mezzanine level will be one of your, um, exercise rooms that you could he- host classes. So when a patron comes into this facility, they're immediately going to see all the different possibilities and the offerings of this type of facility. Lots of activity is going to be going on. It's going to be a very high-energy, exciting environment. Here's a shot looking into the gymnasium. And again, you can see that running track that will be, uh, circumventing the whole building, um, up on that mezzanine level. We'll have multi-sport court, uh, striping on that court. And that's something that you can evolve with the, the different trends of sports and activities as, as trends change. Uh, we will be providing, um, a separator net between the two half-size basketball courts. And all of the basketball hoops will be able to be raised up for different types of events in that space for flexibility of use. Here's a shot into the nadatorium. You'll see, uh, the pool immediately in the forefront of the shot has a zero entry. This is your warm water therapy pool. It have a zero entry with a child's, uh, play structure in the zero entry portion that will transition into a four-foot deep, uh, portion of the pool that you can have some sort of aerobics classes, water aerobics classes, any therapy or aquatic therapy that will be utilized in the space. In between the two pools will be the large flume slide. And, uh, in the background is your large, uh, tournament-level lap pool. You can see too, again, that running track is, uh, rotating around this nadatorium. It will be enclosed due to mechanical system needs, um, of, of the wet nature of the environment. But we will be providing a lot of glass on either side of that running track for visual connectivity and, and make it feel as open as possible. On the mezzanine on that far wall, there's also going to be glass open to that open, uh, mezzanine space where you can have, um, some different activities. Uh, cla- the, uh, the large fitness room will also be overlooking this nadatorium space. So there's going to be a connection between each use of the building. You'll constantly be able to see what's going on in the different, different areas within the building. Here's a view, uh, at the running track going over the main lobby. You can see the climbing features in the background and that main stair coming up to the mezzanine level where you can have different exercise equipment, um, that can be, uh, rotated out as trends change. So back out to the, the front of the building, as I mentioned earlier, we are, uh, moving into the next stages, looking at materiality. Uh, we are working with our, uh, mechanical engineer to really evaluate, um, the energy code on this building and, and what's going to be the most efficient use, uh, of mechanical systems in conjunction with, uh, high-energy, high-insulation value products. So, um, there's a whole bunch of different options out there, but we will be, um, exploring them in the lens of sustainability to, um, maximize the, the use and operations of this facility. Talk a little bit about the, the nadatorium. Uh, your, your large 25 yard by 25 meter lap pool will have 11 lanes by nine lanes. That's going to range from a depth of four feet to seven feet, which can accommodate, uh, team sports such as water polo, um, and fitness swimming and different activities. Um, you can, you can provide, um, uh, different, uh, features such as this picture that shows a floatable inflatable. Uh, that's something that can be rotated out, um, as the programs change and evolve. And it's something very fun and exciting for the kids. It deflates, you can put it away, um, and, and go back to your tournament use. We are trying to fully maximize the activities out of this larger pool to make sure that, um, we're taking full advantage, um, of programming of the facility. Moving into the warm water pool, this range again, from zero to four and a half feet in depth, the, that beach entry, zero entry with kids' play structures for the toddlers. And then moving into the deeper four and a half feet portion of that pool for water therapy, um, and, and rehab, um, classes. Uh, one thing I should point out, the bottom picture on the right, you can see this, this is not, um, as exciting as the slide that we're proposing for your facility, but it has a deck runout space rather than dumping into, uh, one of the pools. And we did that for a variety of reasons. Uh, one being you can, um, maximize the amount of staff needed to watch lifeguards to monitor your, your whole nadatorium. And, um, we, working through the feasibility study and understanding what type of water programs your community would, uh, appreciate most, um, we are maximizing that 25 meter by 25 yard pool to its fullest extent. Some additional design elements, here's an example again of the multi-court striping. You can see these, uh, these are the type of basketball hoops that retract up to the ceiling to allow you to have a, a full-size court, um, for volleyball play or, or other sport, uh, elements. Here's an example of, uh, a control point reception desk that would be centrally located in your facility, have direct line of sight to multiple different access points and control points throughout the facility. You have several different types of multipurpose and several different sizes of multipurpose, uh, activity rooms that you can program for a variety of things, for art classes, nutrition classes, um, you know, uh, a group learning, um, activities. Um, it's, it's going to be a very flexible space that you'll be able to change and evolve with trends as, as the facility matures. Here's some examples on, on the upper left of, um, some of those open, um, fitness rooms where you can host different types of classes. Um, we will be providing, uh, fitness equipment, um, throughout the facility. We are not providing in this type of facility, a concentrated fitness room. I'll go back to that floor plan of the mezzanine. I think it's an important to note. Um, you can see in, in the central green corridor at the top of the stairs, um, that green crosses the track towards the front of the building. We envision this facility to have, uh, your fitness-type machinery, uh, reciprocal bikes, treadmills sprinkled throughout the whole facility to fully utilize that running track. Uh, the idea is patrons can then, um, set up their own little circuit and move through the facility. And it's something that's a little bit different than your typical, uh, fitness-focused facility. And then, um, one of the other items I'll point out, uh, we are providing many different opportunities for, um, a leisure component, different types of seating, tables, workstations. Uh, again, that's something that's going to be sprinkled out depending on, uh, what activity, um, draws you to the facility. Let's say a parent has one kid that's in swim lessons, but we'll have a place for them, not inside the wet environment, that they can set up, do some, uh, work or read a book, but still have, uh, visibility on the pool and, uh, vice versa over to the gymnasium and the rock climbing area. Uh, we find that providing many different types of seating options in this facility, um, really, um, i- is well-received by the users because they can come and stay and not feel like, oh, I've, I've come, I've done my activity and, and leave. With, you know, this is a community wellness building. This is, uh, supposed to provide for many different options for all the patrons that come and, and stay and, and be comfortable here. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, as you can see, his team has done a tremendous amount of work. And when I first came before this body, uh, when we were talking about getting the job, I shared that I've been doing this work for over 35 years. And I've really seen a change in recreation centers. Uh, 25 years ago, it was pretty much youth-oriented play. Uh, you'd have gyms, you'd have game rooms with pool tables and things like that. Um, all the multipurpose room, but it was really, you know, an adult could play basketball too. But then, then more and more communities started adding, adding the water component. And then more and more communities started seeing this as a community facility, not just a recreation facility. So most of our clients today don't even refer to these as community centers or recreation centers anymore. They're moving into wellness centers, multi-generational centers. And this article that I'm showing you was just published this, this month in Park and Recreation Magazine, which is the publication of the National Recreation and Park Association. And I know you can't see it, but that heading says, "Recreation Centers Become Community Wellness Hubs." And it goes on to talk about all of the activities. So I blew up. What, what, what we're designing for today is wellness opportunities, after-school programs, health programs, nutrition programs, drug prevention classes, senior wellness activities, counseling services, swimming lessons, social interaction, all in one place. And as Sean was going through his presentation, he identified the pink rooms. Well, those pink rooms are those multipurpose rooms where you might do a drug prevention class once a week, or you might have a nutrition class once a week. And you can do that. And the, and the beauty of these centers is you might have the adult group going to a, a, a health and wellness class. The children might be swimming for an hour, or they might be shooting basketball for an hour, or vice versa. You, you bring children in for a nutrition program or, and particularly in a river city, uh, swimming lessons. Uh, we have done a couple of community centers that are very close to the schools and they actually have changed their curriculum where every fifth grader in one community has to learn to swim at their wellness center. Uh, so we're, we've really seen it move beyond just, you know, play. They're not just for play anymore. And, and there are also activity centers where you want to, Sean mentioned, you want to do a special event where you need a large space, you can do it in the gymnasium. You can bring the community, gyms are very versatile. You know, is it a, is it a, is it a, a, a health clinic? Is it a special flu shot day? Well, you need a big space, you want to run hundreds of people through there? You have that kind of space. Or you're starting a, a 5K run for some benefit. You can, you know, Noble Park is your central park anyway. Now you have a big building to support all of those activities. Uh, and birthday parties year-round. You can rent that wet room in the nadatorium if you want to do a wet birthday party, or you just want to be in the building and use the climbing walls and, and do that. And, and, and I think the mezzanine has been designed to be flexible. 10 years from now, we won't know what the, the health and wellness trends will be. So we've designed it where the equipment can be moved, it can be removed. You, you can do, uh, you know, change it out seasonally, uh, all, all, all of that. So that concludes our presentation and we'll take any questions. Uh, well, the next steps, excuse me. Um, we finalized the program and we know what our budget goals are. Uh, we met today about potential partnerships, uh, with the Friends Group, uh, with our steering committee. We've completed our site survey and geotechnical testing. So we're moving into the phase of doing the full construction documents, which we'll then use to bid the project and guide construction. So with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you so much. It was a great presentation. Appreciate you both. Questions, comments from the commission? Got the experts in the room.
And we can go back to any slide too, if, if you wanted to go back to something.
Great.
The pools are going to be heated, right?
There's, there are, there are two different temperatures. The, the competition pool will be 82, the therapy pool is 87, I believe.
Eighty-seven, eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Good enough.
Well, I'd like to say you, um, you guys have, it's a great presentation. The facility, uh, top-notch. Uh, I wouldn't expect anything, anything less. Um, my, the concern is when you, when you build a, a facility like this, we all, we get excited, we see it and can see the possibilities, but then we have to pay for it. So you mentioned, you mentioned, uh, partnering. I, I think that's important. Uh, partnering to what degree? Uh, is there, uh, any timeline on that partnering? Where does that partnering come in? In the, uh, uh, in the formation of what, what we've done is, uh, the folks at Paducah, what we've done is put, uh, that 20.5 million, uh, uh, in bond, uh, revenue. We're, we're working, we're working through that, trying to figure out how we're gonna, we create a revenue stream with the insurance premium tax. So you talked about partnering. So what, what degree are we talking about?
Well, there's a lot of, uh, good examples. Um, for instance, um, we did a center in Coleman, Alabama, which I know at least one of your, uh, commission members has been to. They partnered with the local hospital and the local hospital manages all of the wellness activities within the center. They actually pay rent to the city to be in that space because they use that space, uh, knee replacements, hip replacements. So they bring them there and do their therapy there or other, or, or, uh, other surgeries where you might want to get in the warm water pool after a heart bypass and start your exercise program in a much softer environment. So there's partners like that. There's, uh, the cafe could be a revenue partner. In other words, you have a local restaurant who pays, uh, either rent or they pay you a percent of their profits to operate within the center. So there's lots of those types of opportunities.
There are, you're right. And, and that's true. Uh, those things are speculative, uh, obviously. Uh, we're talking, uh, fundraising, uh, those, those partners, uh, putting funds in. Well, to the, to date, uh, the group that has put their money in are the taxpayers of the city. So that, that is, that's solid. That's where, and then we, we raise their taxes. That's where, and then, we raised our taxes to, as a revenue stream. So, it's, and I'm speaking here from elected official, from my point of view. Is that, I'm just concerned with the way the numbers lay out. They're tricky, and I use this, I use this example a lot. We're in the locker room, and we draw it up on the chalkboard, and it's a touchdown every time. But when we get out on the field, we go, whoa, that's some moving parts there. I didn't anticipate that. So, this person was supposed to come through with something. They're not really there to the level that they said they would be. And I've been here in the city long enough to see where we have, we have approached something like this with individuals saying that, with all good intentions, that we're going to, we're going to put the money up, and then we're going to, we're going to do this, and it didn't happen. And we were kind of in a trick box, a very awkward situation. So, again, this is, you guys are great for what you do, and this is a wonderful facility. Where I'm looking at this thing is, it's like, we got to make sure that we, going into this thing, look at every avenue financially, how we can make this work. Because if it doesn't, then it's going to be a beautiful building. The folks that we're targeting demographically, have we looked at that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, but let me, if I could respond to a couple of things.
Yes, please.
We looked at demographics as part of our site selection process and accessibility. And there, the, the, higher-end demographics live a little further west, have the mobility to drive to this facility very easily. But a lot of people in a lower strata live within walking distance. So that's one. So, making it accessible was very important. We talked today in one of our committee meetings about the scholarship program that you have in your Park and Rec Department, and how to potentially, if necessary, expand that. Because the goal, I know from the Park and Rec side, is anyone from any socioeconomic level will have access to this facility. We talked about opportunities to partner with the Boys and Girls Club and bring those children over to the aquatics facility and things that they don't have directly across the street. So that, that's another reason we recommended this site. And when we did our, our performa, the financial performa, it projected with, with a private manager that by year five, you would hit complete revenue neutral and turn a profit in this center. To your point, you know, what if the numbers don't come out? Well, in those numbers, we didn't even have any tenants paying rent to be here or annual subsidies. So, if we can get some good partners who are, you know, taking up the front space, which could go away, we don't have to build it if we don't have partners, which would lower the cost. But preferably, you'll have a strong health and wellness provider as a partner. Because again, this could be the place where you change people's lives. About the, you know, public schools give everybody equal chance. Well, we want this to be like a public school where everybody has equal chance and maybe change their life, you know.
Yeah, and I agree with what you said as far as the, the economics of the demographics around that area. I know that our, our school system was reaching out to be more engaging in the parents of the kids there in the school district. They did some, some studies, and within that area that we're talking about, 76% of the folks that live in that area was economically disadvantaged. In our retreat on Saturday, we talked about the 25% poverty rate in the city, and how do we combat that? So, this gym slash aquatic center, it's not going to be free. There's going to be a membership, there's some other, there's some other amenities in the numbers when you look at training sessions and things like that. So, you guys have done a great job to set the table. Now, it's up to us to look at what's on the table.
Hundred percent.
Raise some lids, you know, see what's underneath there. I think it's important for us to do our due diligence there, but again, I thank you for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think the partnerships are really important, and I think we're going after those. I've been asking about those. I got a, and the other thing that really I'm concerned about is safety. This is a safety issue for our children. My husband and I did physicals at Tillman High School for years and years and years. The number of kids that are playing sports that don't know how to swim is appalling, especially when we live around all this water. As I was leaving today, I got a phone call from a teacher who served many, many years in the Paducah City School. She now has moved away to chase after children. But she said, I've been following this a little bit in the news because I love Paducah, I love Paducah, and I want to tell you, you guys need that so bad. In my tenure of teaching, I had three students drown. I lost three of my students. And she said, it is a public safety matter. And we've got the superintendent of city schools telling us how badly he sees that need. We've got hospital administrators saying, we need this. But we do, we have to do our due diligence, and we need those partners, and we're really hoping that their money's where their mouth is, too, that they want to be a part of this. I took swimming when I was in high school, y'all. I graduated from high school a million years ago. You know, we're behind on this. Kids need that opportunity to learn how to swim as part of their public education. I feel real strongly about that.
Questions, comments?
Okay, I just applaud the connection to economic development. As Bruce made the presentation, it's exciting to look at the possibilities that Paducah, McCracken County, Western Kentucky may be able to take advantage of in providing jobs and income, which will bring in additional tax revenue and will just have a snowball effect. And that's our biggest challenge as a community, is providing jobs for our people here, good-paying jobs. And we're at a disadvantage when, Paducah used to be the fifth-largest city in Kentucky. Now it's the 17th, and we're sliding back. The projections are, we're going to lose even more of our population. And so we've got to address that trend and reverse it. And I think one of the big areas we can do that is in the area of sports and recreation. And we're severely lacking, we have inferior facilities. Everyone knows softball, baseball, soccer, we don't have adequate swimming facility. And so, I think this facility, coupled with the building of some additional soccer, softball, and baseball fields, is just what Paducah needs to make it competitive. If you look at other cities in Western Kentucky, like Owensboro, Hopkinsville, of course Bowling Green, Elizabeth Town always comes to my mind. Elizabeth Town has surpassed Paducah. They have nothing on us, other than some aggressive leadership and a $21 million sports facility. And in 2015, they were the number-one city in the United States of America in new capital, in per capita new business startups, with 173 new businesses in one year opened, and Paducah had one new business open in 2015 for comparison. And that's one of, one of the biggest negatives we have, is quality of life. We don't have the facilities that people are looking for that would want to locate. And so I think this will go a long way in making Paducah more competitive and having the ability to land employers and create some jobs for our people around here. So I applaud your efforts. I think it looks great, and it's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, I just have a question, and I'm sure when we selected you, that this was talked about, but could you just refresh our memory on your experience with this, building these in other communities?
Yes, ma'am. We have, like I said, I've been doing parks for over 35 years, and we moved into architecture about 15 years ago. But we're working on four community centers right now. One in Moorestown, Tennessee, which is in East Tennessee, about this size. We're doing two in Georgia right now. And it is somewhat cyclic in park and recreation, that a particular type of facilities becomes the it thing that you sort of need to have. And right now, it is community wellness centers, because Moorestown, Tennessee, I heard almost the exact same comment about they're building it to help drive industrial recruitment. You know, Cherokee County, it's right outside of Atlanta, they're building another one because their population has grown from 100,000 to over 300,000 in 20 years. So they're trying to keep up with growth. But, you know, they're not new. I mean, community centers have been around as recreation centers for, you know, forever. Major cities like Nashville, where I live, they have 32 community centers across the city for a population of about 800,000 people. They just built three within the last two years, brand-new ones. We designed the one that just opened this fall, 100,000 square feet. People are just looking for year-round access is a big part. And where, you know, if it rains, it's cold, or it's hot, you can go to this type of center, which is conditioned space, and do your, do your thing, whatever it is. And is that, you know, is that slide I showed you, you know, this, there were 20 trends in this article. The top trends in park and rec for 2020 and wellness community activity centers is one of those 20, that they're changing the way people live in communities.
Do you see this as something that draws youth to it? I saw those in the pictures. I guess I'm just expanding on things that you said. You know, we administer a program called Youth Lead for outstanding high school juniors, and they have to apply. And one of the questions on that is always, what would you like to see in your, in Paducah? And the answer, almost from every student, is something to do. So I guess this is something that is used in other communities. You've seen that as attracting youth for activities?
And another trend that is not, wasn't on that page, is e-gaming. If you're not familiar with e-gaming, it's rapidly growing. And so your multipurpose rooms here, you could set up and do e-gaming tournaments. And I happened to be in a hotel in Fayetteville, Arkansas.
I don't know really what you're talking about.
E-gaming is now where you play computer games against other people, and they set up and do tournaments. Well, I was in a hotel in Fayetteville, Arkansas on a weekend, and they had taken their whole banquet hall, and there were hundreds of kids. Well, I shouldn't say kids, they were probably from 10 years old to 30 years old.
I was going to say, you got to watch that. The age goes up a little hard in that, too.
Right. In fact, yeah, I've got a 35-year-old nephew that's doing it all the time. But, yes. And the other thing, you know, that you often don't think about, your park and rec agencies, but outside of your utilities and traffic tickets, or building permits, they're one of the few agencies that can generate revenue for your community and also be a job provider. You know, think about the number of teenagers that could potentially be part-time employees here, or young adults, an adult that needs a second part-time job. Well, this, this could be an employer that the city is providing. So there's just so many benefits. And I'm a big park advocate, I'll admit it. I've served on national committees. My father was a city attorney and judge, and he was always passionate about in our little town, adding more ballfields, adding more parkland. And got a grant to build a new pool, which replaced our 1940s WPA swimming pool in 1979, you know. So we had a 39-year-old pool, that, well, you have one over there, too, Noble Park.
Well, continuing on the pool, could you talk about swim meets? You talked about the number of hotel rooms there. So can you talk about that? Is that a growing industry?
No, it's a steady industry, and you have some people in the audience today who can tell you that they're moving the swim meet from a facility here next week to Hopkinsville because they're having issues. So, you'll have a permanent home for invitational and high school tournaments. Swimming is a steady sport. There's, 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 every, every sport, tennis, swimming, you know, they all go through cycles, up and down a little bit. But, I mean, high schools have had swim teams as long as they've had basketball teams. I mean, football, I mean, it's, and then there's summer swim clubs. A lot of the high schools in communities come together in the summer and become the Paducah Swim Club and go out and do tournaments. And think about it, it's a very healthy activity. Swimming is one of the healthiest exercise activities you can do, both for kids and adults.
Well, we always hear about families packing up for the weekend to go for soccer tournaments or go for ball, and my family does, too. But I know families pack up and go for swim meets as well. And so we would anticipate them coming here.
You could host volleyball tournaments here.
That was going to be my next question. Can I ask a question while you're on the team?
Yeah.
Just one quick. Was about volleyball leagues, because I know that we have a building, you might be aware of it, it's called the Sports Plex. It's about to sell, and it won't be used for recreation any longer. And so I know that there are some youth volleyball leagues that are going to have no home. So I'm thinking through, like, are those community leagues, you know, have you seen that where they, I guess, rent out the facility, and they make sure that they have game days and practice days and?
For, for the last 20 years, our church has had a coed volleyball team that plays on Sunday evenings, and they play at a public facility like this, you know. So, and then, oh, yeah, volleyball leagues are, and in girl's sports, that's one of the, the best scholarship opportunities, because collegiate volleyball, and then on to the Olympic volleyball, is extremely popular.
That's great. Go ahead.
I just had one other, do you have some other local companies that you have partnered with on this already?
Yes, we're, we're using, oh, W.
BFW.
BFW?
Baker-Farmer-Wortman.
Yeah, for all of our surveying, geotechnical engineering, civil engineering, and mechanical and electrical engineering, and structural engineering, and then we're doing the rest. We have the ability to do the rest in-house. And then, we've already met with two of your local large contractors to talk about cost projections and their interest in bidding this project. And of course, they told us about all the different local subcontractors that have the ability to work on this. So it, it.
So our local contractors are interested in building?
Oh, very interested, very interested.
I would anticipate that, but I wanted to make sure. And they already talked about using local subcontractors.
Your investment is going to flow downstream, and those dollars are going to turn over. So, but, yeah, I mean, as a rec person, I'm telling you, this is, I was really glad to see this article about, we're moving to these are social interaction, community places, not just play places.
Thank you.
One, just one, one other thing. This, this facility, the anchor here is the pool. I, and obviously, I understand that, when we talk about data and we talk about surveying and talking to folks in the community, asking, you know, the top 10, top 10 sports that, that they're bringing the most money, activity, swimming is always at the bottom. Now, not saying the kids don't swim, of course they do, and it's a great exercise. But of the $11.5 billion that youth sports generate, it's, it's, it's basketball, it's soccer, it's baseball, it's softball, those travel 12 U and under teams. And I'm a trainer, I see that. I know one kid will bring four people with him. So that, that goes to your hotel numbers. I get that. So, if we're going, if we're, if we're talking about this, I think it's important to understand that the, for this facility, the crown jewel of this facility is the pool. Now, there are other places here in town that you can meet, but if we're talking about the pool and the importance of it, then, then in comparison, and we're talking about usage, and I know, I worked at Paducah-Tillman, I know about the swim meet and all those things. That, that's true. But again, your job is to present it.
Sure.
And then, and it's our job to look at it and decide exactly how aggressively we want to go.
Yes, but I want to, I want to make one statement. We don't think the pool is the crown jewel. It is a multifaceted center with four major components. The pool, the gymnasium, the fitness component, and the walking track. The walking track for this facility is going to set it apart, because centers with indoor walking, all ages, all the time, there'll be. walking, all ages, all the time, there'll be people, if you open at 5:30, there will be primarily seniors, but some young professionals who'll be on that walking track. All day long, there'll be people. So it's, the performer, the consultant, said, this is the mix of facilities you need to really have a high-performing center. Now, the pool is the largest and most expensive component, I will agree with that, but I wouldn't necessarily say it is more valuable to the community than the gym. The wellness, the walking track, and all those multipurpose rooms together create a dynamic center that, that has the catalyst to bring people in.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, just to wrap up, oh, Commissioner Watkins.
Well, I would just add to how a pool can have an impact on economic development in your community. We've got a group of surgeons who invested about $10 million here, and people come in from all over the state and this part of the country for their services because they're so good. One of them was, was at the Mayo Clinic, and everybody knows, he wouldn't have come if he knew the, the condition of the facilities here. And so this is a high priority. It's not just for a few kids to go swimming. It ties in with economic development, and the entire recreational complex does, and what we're trying to do here. So I appreciate your presentation, I appreciate how you tied it in, and thank you for coming.
And I just want to add, I think, I've had the opportunity to sit in on several of your meetings, and we've, gosh, had probably, what, six, seven, eight meetings that some I haven't even been to. And thank you, Commissioner McElroy, and to Jim and the team. There's also Friends of the Parks members who come to those meetings, our Parks and Recreation Team is there. And I just want to say, I think from the beginning, it was very clear to us that we were very open with you to say, this thing has got to be sustainable on a financial level. We cannot do this without it being productive and without it being responsible from our community's perspective. So I want to say thank you for responding to that. When I think about, anytime you're doing a startup of any kind, when you put together projections, yes, that's what they are, projections. But with you partnering with the SFA Group and with them managing a dozen or more...
More than that.
...facilities around the, the country, they told us in one meeting, they have that, their own data. They are actually using their own operational data, financial data, to make projections for us. And so that gave me a level of confidence to know that that five-year projection is not entirely made up, it's actually based on reality of other centers. And so I just think that the team that we have put together here is strong. I know that Jim has had experience doing these kind of facilities in Effingham, and I really am proud. And actually, you pointed out something I didn't really know. I didn't realize the performer was without the tenant rental. That made me very happy. Because I think, and Commissioner Abraham mentioned whether or not our community groups perform and show up or don't perform, the good news about how we've set this up is that this will still be productive with or without the community partners. The good news is that there's a lot of interest in our community from a partnership and a tenant perspective. I was just at a hospital doing a community needs assessment this afternoon, and there was significant interest in doing some of those provider partnerships there. I know the Friends of the Parks Group is made up of a dynamic board with many people who have raised millions and millions of dollars in our community for social services, for the arts communities. And I was saying today, if you think about it philanthropically, there are very few channels for our community to donate to sports and recreation causes, if you really sit back and think about it. And the Friends of the Parks is offering an opportunity for our community to come together and show that we want to invest in ourselves. Lastly, one of the guys that I was meeting with today is an executive at a local hospital, and he was saying that he believes that a center like this demonstrates, when you're a business looking at coming to Paducah, and you look at the health statistics of the potential workforce, and you see that the obesity and overrate weight is significantly higher in Kentucky than it is in other states, but yet you see this community investing in the health and well-being of its community, that narrative changes for that potential business. And so this, I think, is us sending a signal to the world saying, we are solving our own problems, which we are dang good at here in Paducah. And so thank you for being forward-thinking with us. I hope we can all eventually get to these meetings with the consultants. I think you will see the dynamic nature of who we're working with and who we have asked to partner with us, and that this is a solid plan. And I believe two years from now, when we walk through that door, we're gonna be so proud, and you're gonna be there with us.
Absolutely.
So thank you all once again. I guess we'll wrap up unless anyone else has anything to add. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, and just a reminder, I do have a few comment cards up here, but we're gonna wait till the very end of the meeting for public comment. If you are here to participate in public comment, please make sure you fill out one of these cards over by the door and put it in this box right here. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. Does anyone have anything they would like to remove tonight for discussion? All right, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Approved minutes for the January 14, 2020 meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah. Receiving filed documents, personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing the application for and acceptance of a fiscal year 2020 partnership grant through the Kentucky Arts Council in the amount of $5,000 for implementation funding for the projects developed in the 2019 shift workshop, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the application for and acceptance of a fiscal year 2021 highway safety grant through the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for overtime pay for officers and associated fuel costs for the Police Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting the donation of real property located at 1314 Oscar Cross Avenue from Michael Tolbert and Tina Weston-Tolbert to the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute the deed consideration certificate. A municipal order approving an employment agreement between the City of Paducah and Chris Yarber for employment as Director of Public Works, and authorizing the mayor to execute same.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And I think the city manager would like to make a few comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to jump in here. Just wanted to see if I can bring up Chris Yarber. While he's walking up, I do want to thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing us to hire Chris Yarber as our new Director of Public Works.
Thank you, thank you.
Chris has been with the, the city team for how many years now?
It was 24 in December.
Fantastic.
Wow.
And I know all of you know Chris, but some of the view in public might not. So Chris, you want to tell us a little about yourself?
Okay, actually, I started off in 1995. I was hired into the Finance Department by John Perkins. After eight years there, I moved over to Public Works to be a maintenance supervisor. Was promoted to make a superintendent of Public Works and then operations superintendent of Public Works. 2009, we merged with Engineering Public Works, where I was eventually promoted to Assistant Public Works Director. Now, thanks to you all, I've been given this opportunity to be Director of Public Works. I will say that, I've been working with Rick Murphy since 2009. We couldn't ask for a better situation as far as the efficiencies he's put in place and the systems he put in place. I couldn't ask for a better start to take off as Director of Public Works. So I want to thank Rick for that, for that, and thank you all for the opportunity and the belief that I can make this happen for the city. But I'm excited and looking forward to bigger, better things.
I want to say I'm really excited about this because I think this is a sign of growth, that one of the things that I think this is gonna allow us to do is for Rick and his team to be able to focus on all the projects we have going on. And to me, it's a really, it's a signal that we are growing and we have a lot going on, so much so that we need two people to be directors of two different departments to make sure that we are being efficient and effective with our resources. So congratulations. I'm really excited to see how this goes.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you all in the future.
Absolutely.
I'd like to say congratulations to you, Chris. I appreciate you, I always love working with you, my previous time on the commission, certainly now, and you're a great professional and super person. I'm proud for you and proud of you. And I think it shows other city employees that we promote from within, that you can start, and, and you can work your way up to the top.
Yes, sir. Also, I actually, when I hired in with John Perkins, I started off at the front counter as an account clerk. And, you know, it was a big deal. I enjoyed that job. I used the city's education assistance program to receive my bachelor's in business. And so it's definitely an organization that invests in its employees, and I'm proud of that.
Well, at the strategic plan retreat on Saturday, Commissioner Watkins was proud to tell us that he used to work in Public Works and he cleaned catch basins. So I think he's looking for another opportunity, just so you know.
Hey, you know, we used to have employees and commissioners have a day where we go around cleaning up places in the, in the city.
Yeah, let's do it. You can lead us, Commissioner Watkins.
When I, hey, thank you for that lead-in. When I was 20 years old, I worked in the street department for three years as a laborer, a truck driver, and then a concrete finisher. I worked my way up. And then I quit to go to college, but I loved it. And I'm looking for a job now that I'm retired, so let me give you my resume before we get out of here.
You're retired.
Yeah, that's awesome. Any other comments for Chris?
Yeah, Chris, you've always been top shelf, man. I appreciate your efforts and look forward to seeing what you can put together. Leave that department for it.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move into municipal order. Commissioner Wilson?
Well, I know it's just gonna...
I'm glad this one's just sent out to you.
But I'm glad I got this one.
Yes.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the city manager to make a monetary contribution for economic development to Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $140,996.50 to be used as local matching funds for the Federal Aviation Administration grant funding for the engineering and architectural design for a new airport terminal.
Second.
Excellent. I do think this is great that Commissioner Wilson got to read this, because I was thinking about this not too long ago. I guess it's been about two years or so when we were in DC with Jay Page, and we were told over and over again by the FAA, it's time to do your terminal, let's get started.
Actually, it started with a phone call.
A phone call, it wasn't DC, then the phone call, that's right. And so this is exciting to be at this point. I know George Bray is in the audience, the chairman of the Airport Board. This is definitely a community project. We're very excited to be at this stage, and hopefully tonight at the Governor's Budget speech afterwards, we'll hear some good news, too. We'll see how that goes.
I would say, even if it is not in his speech tonight, that we still feel very encouraged that we're asking for the state funds, and I know that they are listening and working with us in the future. So we'll see. It's a few months during this special, during this session, but we have asked for it, they have heard it, they have a lot of interest in it. So I feel really confident that something will work out for us. So we have the money from FAA that is available, we hope to have some state money, this will help with the design. It's a community project as well. It's part of economic development that also will make a big difference. So there are a lot of things going on that we have been doing in our community, bringing federal money in, state money in, and then also to invest in ourselves.
Mm-hmm. I also want to make sure we mention Pacro, because Pacro did put some matching funds, I'm looking at George, to this project as well, which, you know, I do think the airport is such an exciting regional, I'm looking at Bruce, too, a regional project for, I know Ballard County has suggested they're interested, and there's a lot of activity that happens from the region. And so we haven't had a real regional project in a while, so I'm excited that this might be one of those that we can partner with counties next to us on.
I know the county already approved their half of that money, and so tonight it's up to us to do that same.
Yep. Any other questions or comments for this? All right, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. All right, Commissioner McElroy.
Yes, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of Colonial Court between 100, 104, 106, and 107 Colonial Court, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closure of a portion of Colonial Drive between 100, 104, 106, and 107 Colonial Court, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute quick claim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Any comment, questions about this one? No, okay, call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Planet Morgan not to exceed $90,000 for technical assistance with EverGov codes and permitting software implementation. This ordinance is authorized, this ordinance authorizes the city, the mayor, to execute a professional service agreement with Planet Morgan in an amount not to exceed $90,000 for technical assistance with the implementation of the Intergov software.
Second.
Any comments, questions about this item? This is gonna finish what we saw this morning, or part of it is gonna do that, or this morning, geez. It's been a long meeting already. Oh, my gosh, what we saw earlier in this meeting, it's gonna help us finish out that whole process, right? Excellent. All right, let's call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. I can't believe I said this morning, that's crazy. What a day. All right, Commissioner Wilson?
Well, I'm glad I got this one, too. I saw Doc Hiding here earlier, and I think we have such a jewel in Brook Stadium, and I'm glad that we're able to do something that you all wanted with that. So I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 70, Article 3, Brook Stadium Commission of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to increase the total number of Brook Stadium Commission members from nine to 10, and to remove the voting rights of the Brook Stadium Commission President, except to cast a deciding vote in the case of a tie.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Just, well, just comments, I was out there at the ballpark on, on Sunday, and I told Doc before the meeting, I mean, you got some grassology going on out there. I mean, these guys, they, they know exactly what they're doing. They send soil samples off to find out exactly what nutrients the, the grounds need, and it's, it's not just a surface conversation. They went way deeper than I was, I was trying to keep up. But whenever, when it's time to toss that first pitch, it's a field of dreams out there, and what you don't see is what the guys were doing on Sunday. We don't see that part. We just see it's a beautiful day to play baseball, and it goes off without a hitch. There's a lot of work that goes on out there, and Doc and the crew is right on top of it. And I applaud your efforts, Doc. It looks great all the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
He's thanking Mark. That's great. Any other comments or questions?
I was just gonna add that we plan on following up next meeting with the board appointment.
Oh, great, excellent, all right. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of JSC Terminal LLC doing business as Midwest Terminal for the city's fuel supply for the 2020 and 2021 calendar years, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby accepts the bid, JSC Terminal LLC doing business as Midwest Terminal for the city's supply of gasoline, diesel fuel, and diesel fuel off-road at a price of 12 cents per gallon above OPIS Oil Price Information Service, as well as Valtech Marine Gasoline Additive and Valtech Premium Diesel Additive at a price of 4 cents above OPIS. Said contract is for a period of two years and contains two additional one-year options to renew if both parties agree.
Second.
Mayor, Commissioner, city manager, simply stated, we use a lot of fuel, and this contract puts us in a position where we can go over to Sixton Park Avenue, we got a card, we track the fuel usage of every vehicle. It helps us with preventative maintenance, you know, like when you go to the oil change place, you get like 3,500 miles or this date, bring it into the shop, we'll change your oil. That's one of the things that we use for this, but it just provides us adequate, efficient fuel service for all of our vehicles, all of our rolling stock.
Any questions? No, all right. Thank you, Rick. Commissioner McElroy.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement and other associated documents between the City of Paducah and the Paducah Police Department Bargaining Unit. This authorize is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute agreement and other associated documents between the City of Paducah and the Paducah Police Department Bargaining Unit. This agreement shall be in effect from July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2023.
Second.
You starting this off?
I'll kick it off. I did ask Michelle Stephanie if Chief could come up, too, please. You can come up, too, if you want.
Who are you pointing at?
Basically, it's a, I believe, I'm excited to be talking about this tonight, we had a wonderful opportunity to sit down and bargain with our local FOP unit. We had three sessions, and we actually took it, an approach that I like to take, is basically have the ability just to kind of sit together, because we're all one team, we're all Team Paducah, and be able to put the issues on the table, and look at those issues, and talk about those issues, and have some good discussions about those issues. Going into this, these conversations we had with the FOP was basically working on trying to do something citywide here, is what, starting with the FOP, soon to be talking about the IFF, is talking about making sure that we are still an attractive employer, making sure that we focus on what we can do internally to retain our employees, what we can do to recruit our employees, making sure that we are able to provide the best services we can to the citizens and the local businesses that choose to do business here in the City of Paducah. So we had a wonderful, some wonderful conversations surrounding that issue, and I believe what we have in front of us is a, is a very, very good beneficial contract that's going to benefit the city long-term. Also, it's going to benefit our employees, Team Paducah members, long-term. Three-year agreement, basically, we looked at modifying the grievance procedures in there, and the COLAs we're looking at is a 2.5, 2.5, 2.5 and a 3% increase over those three years. We actually went in and reconstructed the pay scale, if you will, simplifying it for our finance team, where they can actually have some simplification on the pay brackets, if you will, at the same time, making sure that we eliminate compression issues within those pay scales, within the police department, making sure it's attractive when they're applying and testing for those promotions, it's something that's going to be beneficial for their families. They're taking on those extra responsibilities, making sure they're rewarded for those extra responsibilities, and making sure that your, your police officer at year five isn't making the same as your police officer at year 20, making sure you're eliminating those issues. And these issues were identified back in 2011, when we had the wage compensation study that was done, but some minor steps were taken. We're looking here to take some good steps to kind of implement what was observed back in 2011. So this agreement does that, it gets us in the right direction. We still, from the city's perspective, want to do a wage and compensation study throughout the city, and of course, we'll include the police department in that, too, to see, did we hit the mark right? You know, are we too low, are we right, or wherever we should be. We also looked at comparables in our comp stats, if you will, with other communities that are similar to Paducah, throughout Kentucky, Illinois, Missouri, looking about what are they paying their officers, what their compression, what's their rate rates look like, making sure we're competitive with them, because that's who we're competing against. We compete against bringing people into Paducah who want to work here on our lateral transfers. In the agreement, we looked at doing a, up to, instead of five years, up to 10-year maximum credit for service, making sure that we're attracted to those out-of-state people as well, or other cities, to bring them to work for us, and that's going to save us all that training expense and time. When we bring in a new officer now, it's a full year before they can go out there and be cannonless mountain power and hit the street. You know, those four officers right there, a year from now, they're your patrol officers. Those laterals we bring in, it's not that way. We bring them in, we send them through our FDO program, we get them to hit the street running faster, quicker, training expenses are not there. Cory and I were just talking before the meeting, talked about, we talked about how the savings that we get with the retention of our employees, too, that means that we're not having to hire the new employees, we're not going to train the new employees, we're not going to outfit the new employees. So we're saving, you know, $30,000, $40,000 on not training an employee, being able to keep our members here, keep them here with that wisdom, that job knowledge, that skillset, that experience, which is so valuable to us. So I think all in all, the proposed agreement accomplishes a lot for the city. Very happy to do that, very happy to come to terms with these guys in the three settings, and I appreciated the can-do attitude of the group. Michelle, Stephanie, John Perkins, Chief Laird, sat there on the, on our bargaining side, of course. The, Cory led the FOP side, and it was just a great, I think, team environment. I go on, I'm, I'm sorry.
I like your passion about this. This is great. No wonder it went so well.
Coming from a former police officer.
That's right. Yeah, he's been in the shoes.
Well, I was just thinking, those guys started at 26, I started at 25, I'm thinking, man, I'm old now.
Does anyone have any questions or comments that they want to make?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate the good faith negotiations from both sides. Public safety is the highest priority of our government in Paducah and government at all three levels, as far as I'm concerned, and so we want the finest out there, and we have that, and we appreciate the great leadership under Chief Laird, and things haven't always been this good. And so to be able to hammer out a contract in just three meetings is wonderful, and I'm just, I'm really appreciative of both sides making a good faith effort and a good result, and thank you all for doing that, and I appreciate all of our law enforcement officers for the City of Paducah.
I'll second that as well. I've never been in the negotiating room, but I've lived with the person that was in the negotiating room, up in leading those efforts for many years in the manufacturing world, and to see this come across this, you know, in this timely fashion and in such good spirit, thank you to both, both of you, with FOP and the firefighters and the city, you, Chief Laird, Chief Kyle, and all the rest of the city staff, thank you so much for that. I remember back, before I came on the commission, I think you, when you were on the commission, times weren't, it wasn't this way always. So we're really appreciative of the great relationship that we have, and we value you, and we know how important safety is to our community, and so thank you for what you do.
Here, here.
I'll just copy what Commissioner Watkins said. To make this moment just a feel-good moment, you would have to go through the bad part, where, you know, you one tick away from taking, taking each other to court. I mean, that's how bad it was. And I've always thought that when you sit down with, in negotiations, that you have to trust that the other person across the table is negotiating in good faith. It takes two people to do that. It takes, there's a major trust factor there. So to see it go off like it did speaks volumes to the management team and to the leadership team, the local, you guys. So it's part of our job description, keep folks safe, and, you know, we pass policy, but you execute them. So I appreciate you.
Thank you, okay. Thank you all for your service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Looking forward to passing this in the next meeting. Thank you all for your help. All right, we're going to move on to the next one, if that's okay with you all. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Paducah and Professional Firefighter of Paducah, Local 168 International Association of Firefighters. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement with the Professional Firefighters of Paducah, Local 168 International Association of Firefighters. This agreement will become effective July 1, 2020, and expire on June 30, 2023.
Second.
Ditto? Is that what you need to say?
No, it was, this was a different experience. It was a, the, two sessions, so three. So the, it was amazing to sit down with the members of the, they're not here tonight, but with Nathan Torian and his group, and the, again, working with them, they had, they brought in a representative from their labor union from Lexington that came and sat in both sessions, and kind of worked through the issues and talked through the issues, and I did something that I've not done. This is the first, I've been doing negotiations for, I think this is my eighth one, maybe. I didn't lead our team. I had Michelle do it. She did, she beat me. She got it done in two, I got it done in three. So, you know, it was a great experience, though, working with, you know, Nathan from the IFF and the guys, and talking through the issues, and, you know, a lot of, again, putting the issues on the table, you know, not taking anything personal, trying to work out for the betterment of the city. So like you said, a lot of this, the same thing, very similar to the agreements, you know, the 2.5, 2.5, 3% for the annuals, restructuring, again, they did some restructuring the last time, working towards trying to create some, fight the compression issues. We did a little bit more this time. Also, what we did was we did the, they wanted for us, which is a great move, to add in, we did the police, too, some additional ranks, where, and police officers, where you go up to, and firefighters, you go up to 25-year for captain, 25-year for lieutenant. And what's that mean? That means retention. You know, that means there's something for them to get to, you know, and there's a, it's to keep them here, again, to keep that job knowledge, to keep that wisdom, to keep us fully staffed. You know, it was all about keeping what we have and making ourselves more attractive for, you know, employer. That was the whole gist of going into this, and it was great to be able to have that shared message, and I do think the board will hear as well about reaching out with them and talking about staffing in the fire department and what that looks like. And I said, I got goosebumps when Nathan told me, we want to partner with you in doing this, and I told him, I said, you gave me goosebumps, you know, so, and I appreciate you guys being willing to look at that 60th person from 59, you know, on the fireside. So, but I'm still Michelle's thunder, because she was, she was the lead dog on this one.
Congratulations, Michelle. We'll say that to you, turn our attention. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I did want to add just a couple of statements with both the police and the fireside, that really, we did work very closely with them under a common goal of really recruitment and retention. You know, we're seeing a lot of retirements in the public safety, we have a lot of recruitments going on right now, and so it was a really great partnership that we talked about, how can we be a preferred employer and recruit people here and provide great benefits? So it was a wonderful experience, and also, I have to give a shout out to the team, this was the, our HR director, Stephanie Swazos, she'd been with us about three weeks and jumped right into collective bargaining, so we just dunked her and did a great job, and then the other, you know, the leadership team members and John with finance, so it was a really great experience.
Well, congratulations, Stephanie, to you as well.
Yeah, we had Chief Kyle and Chief Tinsley helped us on the management side as well.
If I could say on this one, I'd like to just, I'm not going to repeat it, my speech I made, but also to Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Abraham's points, it wasn't like this before at all. Now we've got a city manager who is a former police officer and understands the importance of first responders, and how valuable they are as a resource, the most valuable resource we have is our employees. And in my previous tenure, the firefighters went nine months without a contract, and there were lawsuits, and it cost the city about a million dollars, in my recollection, because of some of the actions that were taken by the city. And so it's a different world now, and it's a much more pleasant world, and I'm glad to see that our first responders value working for the City of Paducah and stay with us until they do reach, reach their retirement age, rather than looking for a place to get out. So thank y'all again, both sides, for your negotiations, and appreciate the firefighters.
Thank you.
Absolutely. That's right. All right, we have a very exciting presentation from our finance director, Mr. Perkins. Are you joining him on this presentation? All right.
Well, I'm about the exciting part.
You used black and white.
Yeah, well, this is good. He did a good job with this. How we roll.
I can't wait.
Okay, see if I can do this without breaking this. Okay. Jim told me I had 10 minutes.
All right.
Okay, no questions?
We promise.
Anyway, this is the first time we've done a quarter report for the commission publicly. We do provide monthly financial statements, exciting to read those. We also have scorecards for the investment fund, that's all on the website, and then, of course, all of our budgets and all of our financial statements from the audit, they're out there for the last, forever, a long time. So if you want to go look at them, either you all or the public, please, please feel free to do, that's why we put them out there for. So today, we're going to cover the first three months of the quarter, ending September 19, and I guess we're done.
Any questions? Wow, this is an ongoing joke.
Quick 10 minutes.
We've never done this before, and we still.
There's, okay. It's your fancy graph. Boy, I guess. Anyway, so we're going to do an overview of the general fund, the investment fund, debt service, property tax, and the project status at the end. I guess we'll just keep the bay moving here. We're going to talk about the general fund and the investment fund first. Should I be pointing up, up to the ceiling, or maybe that'll work better? Anyway, the general fund and the investment fund are probably the best-known and most talked-about funds, and so that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So the general fund, let's, let's just get started. We're going to talk about the revenues first. This, again, this is just the first quarter, first three months, ended September 30, and to give you perspective, I wanted to let you see three years, starting on the left side is, you know, three years back, and then moving to the right is the current year, and you can see, whoop, too fast. It's, the first quarter reports, the first quarter results are not necessarily an indication of how the whole year's going to turn out, but it oftentimes is a good indication, and as you can see, it's been relatively flat. And so I want to talk about major fund types. This is what we usually talk about, and when you're talking about revenues in the general fund, and major revenues in the general fund are the following: real estate property taxes, payroll taxes, insurance premium taxes, and business licenses. They make up the lion's share of the revenue from the general fund. And in the first quarter, we don't have property taxes, and that won't happen until the second quarter, actually. And then we can boil this thing down to specific accounts, payroll tax, insurance premium tax, insurance, business license and revenue, real estate property taxes. These four type of accounts make up 80% of the general fund, so whatever these things do, that's what happens to the general fund. So if we tamper with those, either take them up or take them down, they have an immediate effect. And then in 2020, 20, in 2020, we anticipate that the general fund will receive around $36 million in total revenues, and the largest revenue category is occupational licenses, which is licenses and permits, which we spent a lot of time talking about, and that makes up about $26 million, or about 71% of the general fund revenue. During the first quarter, occupational licenses grossed about $5.5 million, or about 85% of all general fund revenues taken in that quarter, and typically, that's followed by all property taxes, which includes real estate, personal, franchise bank, and vehicle taxes, and that amounts to about $7 million for the year. But so far in the quarter, we've only brought in about $132,000 for property taxes. Again, it hasn't happened yet. You'll see it in the next quarter. Now, my favorite side is the expense side, and again, similar to the revenues that you've seen, they're, last couple of years, about the same. If you, if you, if you can remember, if you can remember what the revenue I showed you was compared to this, this is substantially different, higher. That is not, don't be alarmed of that, that is not unusual, and you can see in three years, the gap is about $2.5 million in the first quarter. That is not unusual. If you went back 10 years, it'd probably be about the way it is, because we have cash flow, we haven't brought in property taxes yet, and it won't be until sometime in April that you'll see business licenses, so it's not unusual for us to show those kind of gaps. Just to give you an idea of how the department, how the fund works, each department has its own appropriation or budget, about 50, and we've talked about public safety a lot tonight, about 54% of the general fund, or about $19 million of the annual budget, is exclusively for public safety, and more particularly for police and fire, in the year 2020, anyway. And then that's followed by Public Works slash Engineering Department, which is now split, soon to be, and that's about 5.7 million, followed by Parks, which is about $3.5 million. Now, the total in 2020 annual appropriation for the general fund, again, is 36 million. Revenues are 36, and expenditures are 36. They just come in at different, different times, and you can just see how it breaks apart. These are the big four, and then everybody else makes up that quarter, the upper-left-hand quadrant there. Investment fund. Now, investment fund was started in the fall of 2005. You may remember, it was started with a half-cent payroll tax increase. And let's see, the investment fund, there's a scorecard, a lot of, this, we started this, I guess that's been 15 years ago now, there's a scorecard that we put out every quarter, and if you were to go out there today, you'd see the first quarter, of course, and when first quarter, of course. And when we get through all four quarters, on the fourth quarter, we put the whole year in. So I think we have the whole scorecard for many, many years going back. Pam's real good about getting all that out there. You can go back and look at the whole history book. I don't know if it goes back 10 years, but it goes back quite a way. This is to give you perspective, really. And the type of expenditure that we have in the investment fund are primarily, I know it's hard to read at the bottom, but this fund is used primarily for arts and culture organization donations, capital improvements, debt service payments, economic development, neighborhood development, and then subsidy support payments to various organizations. And you can see between the two years how they stack up. Again, some of this is timing. If you look at debt service, it could be a timing of one month. But for the most part, they're all pretty much the same every year. Okay, the next section will include some conversation about debt service, property tax, and project status. And start out with the debt service first. Now, this is really hard to read. I know I couldn't come up with a simple picture. So I had to tell you everything. So maybe to give you a little perspective, and for people at home that are watching this, this is hard to see, but let me just tell you what it is. At the end of last fiscal year, which is the beginning of this fiscal, and that'd be July 1 of 2019, last summer, if you look at the far left column, the first column of numbers, you see the bottom line is about $26 million. That's what our outstanding debt was. It's like your mortgage. And throughout the quarter, which was from July 1 of 19 through September 30 of 2019, we had to make house payments, right? And everybody knows if you have a house payment, some of it's principal and some of it's interest. Now, this, what you're really, you don't want to pay any more interest than you have to, but you always love it to be more principal because that means there's less debt at the end of the month. So in this case, you can see at the bottom line, the second column there with numbers, it's $1,159,000. That's how much we extinguished in principal. Now, on top of that is another $300,000 in interest. And you can see on the far right, bottom line, we're now down to $24.7 million. And that's a huge amount of money that we pay out for for debt. I just wanted to give you perspective. And you may not recognize a lot of these issues, but for instance, look at 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth line from the bottom up, it says 911. We recently did some work over 911. And I can't tell exactly what it was we bought, but we bought a lot of expensive equipment. And that's how we paid for it. We borrowed the money to do that. And during this quarter, we paid off $80,000 toward that debt. And so you can see the ending balance there. And if you go up, if you start at the top, go down five, you see pool reno, that's pool renovation. Mark's Pool, I think, yeah, Mark's Pool has been renovated a couple of times in my lifetime here. But the most recent time was 13, I think. And so that's, I forget what we borrowed over a main box, can't recall. But now we finally have down to $720,000. And just like your mortgage at home, the longer you're into the debt, the more goes toward principal. And at the beginning of the debt, it's higher toward interest.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
Are these only the debts or is this, this is comprehensive debt? So some of this is paid by transient room tax and transfers from the county into our bank, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is the comprehensive list?
That's exactly right.
Okay, all right.
Good question. This is everything the city has any responsibility to pay.
Okay.
It may be funded by the 911 Fund, the Solid Waste Fund, the county bed tax, the general fund. And so it all runs through this one place. It's all captured in one spot. So it's easy to see. Property tax. Now, we're almost done. We got 10 minutes yet?
No one's done.
Okay, we're getting close?
Mine won't take long. Go ahead.
Okay, well, here we go. So here's a snapshot of the real estate property value growth from 10 until the current year. Whoop, here we go. Wanted you to see this. The biggest growth year was in 16, which was about 5.2% increase. And the worst year, and you may remember this, right after the Great Recession, in my 30, almost 30 years, we've never had a year where we lost growth, never. That's the one and only time. I hope we never see it again. But that actually did take place. So the most recent five-year average rate of growth is about 3.4%. And the last 10 years is about 3%. And so values seem to be growing in a positive direction for many years. But and this year, the growth rate is 2.8%, which is solid, solid rate compared to the year before, which was about 3. This is one of my favorite slides, and I want you to understand this one because we constantly get picked at for this. I want you to, so I finally came up with a good graphic. Okay. So when people come to the city hall and they need to write a check for property taxes, what they need to understand is that most of that property tax check doesn't belong to the City of Paducah, okay? Most of it belongs to somebody other than us. And so I wanted to give you a comparison over the last, what is that, 20, 15 years. And the green is the City of Paducah. The back part is the school system, the independent school system, not the county. And then the stacks in the middle, that's the state, that's the county, that's everybody, the library, everybody else. Now, we, again, we only collect for the city, junior college, and the school system in the city. But this is, if you lived in any place in the City of Paducah, this is the breakdown. Because everybody has to pay county tax, everybody has to pay state tax. And if you live in a city, everybody has to pay property tax for the city. So I wanted to give you a rate, a benchmark. And you can see in 10, the city's part of that entire tax bill, not just the city, not just the county, not the state, all of it. We were shy about 20% of that total bill. And then it's gotten better, I guess. Our ratio now is only 17.7%. So while our rate has just very, very, very slowly grown, it really took a big hit years ago. We took it way down really fast. And now we're kind of leveling off and taking it. Maybe hopefully we'll continue to grow it up because we're going to need some more revenue. But you can see we're not the problem, if you want to call it that. But our, the city's part is much smaller, it's getting smaller every year because not, not that we're dropping our rate, but everybody else is raising their rate. And it depends on how you want to look at it. But again, people, when they write the check, they don't make it to the cities, they don't make it to the school system. They make it payable to the City of Paducah so they think it's you and me. And so anyway, I just want to make that abundantly clear for people at home, too, so you can see this. Give you great perspective. Now, this is Jim's show, and you have, what, 30 seconds left?
Two seconds. I'll do it. Click the next one.
Oh.
Thank you. What I like to try to do is also during these reports is kind of update the commission on where we're at with our projects that in the, that identify within our capital improvements plan. So basically, any project or purchase that's $5,000 or more, we capture that. We have 47 planned projects in FY '20. You can see from that chart there that 68% after three months was in progress. So we got a fast start, which is great. 24% were yet to start. I call that pending. And then 2% were deferred to a future fiscal year. So basically, they made determination at the beginning of the year, we're not going to do those. And then 6% of the projects were already completed. And the beautiful thing about doing these quarterly reports, you'll see the progress as the pie changes, and you'll see where the completion, projects are completed, and the pending, of course, disappears, that type of thing. So really get a good feel for the activity that's occurring for the first three months. Go to the next slide. I wanted to break down, this is something new. I wanted to break down in progress. What's in progress mean and where are we at in those, in those, those projects that are in progress? So what I challenged the team this, this time to do was kind of give me a feeling of where you're at. Are you almost done? You're partially there, that type of thing. So we used a metric of 25%, 50%, and 75%. You can kind of look at that. But about half of them are just underway, 25% complete, 50% halfway done, about 25% of them. And then again, about 25% or 75% complete. So what that tells me, our next report, because we're done with two quarters now, is going to come out, we're going to be, those, those 75% complete are going to be done. So a lot of the projects that were in progress will be complete during our next report. Next slide. Purchases, these are major purchases, $5,000 or more. We had 28 planned for FY '20. As you can see here, in progress, 50%. Typically, what happens is your purchases take off, they're much quicker, nimbler. You can go faster with your purchases. You can get them done quicker as you begin the year. So we had 50% shoot off real fast, 32% already done, 4% decided not to do it or potentially didn't get a grant to do it, so deferred to a future fiscal year. And then 14% pending. So to dive into the 50% in progress, there it is, 64% are halfway complete, 14% or 25% complete, and 22% are ripened up. So basically, again, your purchases will go faster and then drop off, and your projects will catch up at the end of the fourth quarter. I've found this tool in the past to be very helpful for the board to kind of see where we're at on our plan, the projects we have in the budget with the purchases in the budget to see the activity. So you know, as we go through the year, how we can see if we're getting things done that we said we're going to do. This is our first run out of here for this, for this quarterly report. I hope you found the information useful and helpful. We're open to tweaking it. We'll do it every quarter, bring it back to you guys with more data. But just kind of ponder that and open it up for questions.
My question would be, I know that the 47 projects and the 28 purchases are in the budget, but I don't think I've seen them all stacked together. Could you guys send a list of those to us?
Yeah, it's in the CIP. Yeah, I'll get that. I definitely can get that to you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for John and Jim? No? Thank you, John, for doing this.
Yes, ma'am.
Listen, you get four or maybe five times a year to give your spiel about how the city collects less property tax than anybody else. So this is a good opportunity for you.
Yeah, I do my best.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move into comments from the city manager.
It's been long enough, and I'll pass to the next time.
All right. Any comments from the commissioners tonight? I have two quick things. I wanted to say congratulations to the Community College for their partnership with University of Louisville. Commissioner Wilson and I were there. They are opening a new dentist clinic. And I got to tell you, when I was at St. Nicholas Family Clinic, the need for dental services in our community was so apparent, and we still struggled to figure out the solution to that. So I'm excited to see that new clinic get up and running. They're still looking for their dentist. I think they launched their job description, and they're looking for someone who wants to take that role. And then their anticipation is maybe in the summer they'll get started. And they'll serve those who can't pay and also Medicaid patients as well. So what a great opportunity for our community.
They'll be bringing six students from U of L in, dental students.
It's really great. And speaking of the Community College, I have the privilege of traveling with Dr. Reese this weekend to San Antonio. He asked me to be on his pitch team. They are trying to win the Bellwether Award. And so myself and him and the completion coach of the community scholarship program are going to present to the judges on Monday. So wish us luck. Think about us on Monday. They've tried for this award several times, gotten in the top 10. And this year, I think he thinks I'm going to help him win it. So I'm ready.
Do it.
I'm ready. All right. Any other comments from the commissioners tonight? We have a few audience questions. We're going to put our three-minute timer up tonight. And Mr. Ward, would you like to go first?
Oh, yeah. It's been a long wait tonight.
I know.
I pushed him out for a sweep. Well, I'll try to rush through this. First off, I would agree, Mr. Abraham, about the Aquatic Center. It's a beautiful building. I will agree with that. But is it cost effective? I'm not sure. Because, for example, like, they built the hub in Marion, which cost about 15.2B. I think it opened in 2015. And it's had like $1.7 million of unexpected expenses, which the city council has had to cover. So I mean, my point is, and agreeing with him is, that is, I think that financial viability of those figures might be stretched a little thin. And then the second thing, since we talked about economic development, Mr. Wilcox here, I think, but still, the biggest detriment to economic growth, you remember, I came down here in 2014, so y'all were here about the electric rates. Y'all know you remember that.
I wasn't here.
High electric rates are sort of like the elephant in the room. Just like that meeting Mr. Wilcox has had a few weeks ago, when he alluded to, our biggest problem in economic development is our electric rates. And I mean, really, there's nothing you can do about that. And the third thing I was going to cover is what Mr. Perkins brought up, is about your general budget, which he alluded to the Fire Department and the Police Department eating out 54% of our general budget, which we do need both. But compared to the sister cities in the region, Mayfield, Murray, say, Hop Town, and Owensboro, which I've studied all their budgets, our police as a 54% is a much higher percentage than any of those cities. So I mean, that's just all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. All right, Mr. Matt Baker, would you make it through the whole meeting?
Thanks for the statistics. Thanks for your time. Sorry for, apologies for the way I look. It's grown my hair out to donate to kids with cancer. So it's a rough process. My name's Matt Baker. I'm 43 years old. Ever since I was a four-year-old, I've been active in Paducah Parks and Recreation, soccer, swimming, basketball, baseball, after-school programs, food truck, as well as acro tap ballet. My mom made me do all that. So, you know, don't hold it against me. But, you know, and PCC Summer Camps, where I first met Mr. Watkins with our week-long of karate classes, you know. So activities in this town have been big. And big things have been what we've been missing the whole time, I feel. We are a sports, look, you know, we're, all of our professionals are out, you know. If we're building a facility like this, is the track big enough to hold regional meets, indoor meets, Olympic things? I mean, if we're going to do it, just like we did back then, now 20 years later, we're looking at all the old stuff, wanting to plant something new. We're not even taking care of what we got. My heart bleeds for this town, not just city, but county. Can, can we take a timeout? Can we step back? Can we build ballfields so every Sunday morning, churches aren't empty? I'm not a statistics guy. I'm not a percentage guy. I'm a numbers guy. And I know the numbers that I see are gone. And there's only one way to get them here, and that's to do what they're doing and be the best at it. We're centrally located, two hours from Nashville, six hours from everywhere else. We're the hub for the Midwest. We have plenty of hotel rooms. But we got to take care of what we got. If I'm going to bring a business in from out of town, storm drains aren't draining, landscape isn't done. It's the little things that catch the eye. It's the people. We've lost our heart. We've lost our soul. We've lost our neighbors. We don't know our neighbors anymore. Technology is an information overload. We can't take care of above ground and below ground. I'm all for building. I'm all for it. You got the biggest supporter on all ends. But you know, I signed up for Friends of the Park. I got one email asking a questionnaire, no other updates. I call, I send messages. I volunteer to redo an Indian statue. I get thanks, I, you know, but that's the end of it. We can't even build a sidewalk for the women at Merriman House. I don't care if it's a box played and a gravel road to get them off of the road. They've already been through enough. It's people getting back to people, and we don't know our people. Bring it up for, take a timeout, pray on it. Anything worth doing takes time is worth prayer. You guys work hard. I know you do. And I appreciate your time. I appreciate your feedback all the way around. But some of this stuff is just lights and glamour. I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it right the first time and not have to do it again.
Thank you. All right, we got one more. Amanda Esper.
Hello, I'm Amanda Esper, and I'm president of Friends of the Parks Paducah. And as a resident, mother, and business owner in Paducah, I just want to say I'm super excited about this opportunity. I see the need for forward thinking from several different aspects. I've heard of many different professionals that have tried to come into this town. They love the idea of Paducah, but then they see something that's better in another city that's suited about the same size as Paducah. And we've lost out on a lot of nice professionals for, you know, hospitals and for other companies and for all kinds of different things around here. And I think it's time for that to stop. And so the community wellness hub, as Chris put it tonight, will definitely allow us for people to benefit and enjoy the benefits of healthy living from different aspects. And so I urge everyone here tonight to think about the many possibilities of additional revenue that this place is going to bring to our community and get behind this forward-thinking project. We've got to continue to keep looking forward. To be a part of our project, you can look at friendsoftheparkspaduca.org, and we are happy to answer any questions. And we are happy to have anybody on board with us. That is about it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, with that, I'm going to, Commissioner Wilson has a motion to go into executive session.
I move the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. One, future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B. Second, issues which might lead to the appointment dismissal or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 61.8101F. And third, a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And we will come back out to adjourn, but we will not be taking action tonight.
Thanks, everyone, for hanging in there with us.
Yeah, thank you all. Have a good night.